Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Good afternoon and welcome to the study session, the Mays City Council Study Session for September the 17th. Our council is present and I believe Mr. Whitaker is joining us on the telephone. Jeremy, are you there? I think we'll wait and see if he joins us, or maybe he's just joining us for the meeting upstairs. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda for tonight's regular council meeting upstairs, so council if you could please refer to that agenda. Currently, everything is on the consent agenda. The first several items are liquor license applications, followed by various purchase Mr. Brady, I know that you have some information, that there's, I think, a council presentation on Agenda Item 5C, is that correct?
Correct, Mayor. Just when you're ready, we could, we have a brief presentation about this.
Okay. Great, maybe we'll just, well, thank you. Council, I know Mr. Thompson has a question or a statement regarding Gen Item 6A, is that right, Mr. Thompson?
I do, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to make sure for public record that, and this comes from the development or the zoning attorney as well, that to remind everyone that the community adjacent to this project and the owner of the project have a set of development agreements that they've agreed on, stipulations that they've agreed on, that aren't part of the city's development agreement with the property owner. So there is a, I think eventually it could come back to us if the developer doesn't uphold their part, the community may come back to the council and say how come. But this was an agreement that was really just between the developer and the community and not between the city and the developers, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear on this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that was Agenda Item 6A, and you're okay with that remaining on the consent agenda, great. Counsel, any other questions regarding what's on the agenda for upstairs before we hear a presentation on Item 5C? Okay, thank you. Scott, if you'll come forward. Welcome, Scott. Neil?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Scott Boucher, I'm the Environmental Management Sustainability Director. I have Neil Curley, Special Projects Manager here with me today. If you recall, when we were going through the budget discussions, we had a project in there of food to energy, and so we're here today because we have an Agenda Item 5C with an IGA with ASU, and so we wanted to give you a quick update on the progress that we've made on the, on the project. I guess one of the first things is, is that we have Neil Curley now over in our department, and he's been heading up this project as a Special Projects Manager. So with that, I'll turn it over to Neil.
Thanks, Scott. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So the Food to Energy Program is a conceptual program where the city would collect food waste from commercial establishments and then transport that food waste to the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant for co-digestion with the municipal sludge, and as a result of that process, that would be the production of biogas, which could then be used for the production of electricity, that can power the plant, or another alternative is to use it for renewable natural gas, which then could be used to fuel our collection trucks. So we're trying to create this closed-loop system where food waste is collected and then converted into energy and then used to fuel the trucks to go out to collect more food waste. So as part of that, over the next year, we'll be conducting a feasibility study to look at the technical, operational, and financial feasibility of this program. And then on your agenda related to Item 5C is an IGA with ASU for one component of that feasibility study, which is the bench scale digester testing services. So the ASU BioDesign Center has the expertise and lab abilities to conduct these tests for us, and basically what they will be doing is recreating the anaerobic digesters out at the plant, but on a very small scale, and then introducing food waste and a combination of food waste and fog, it stands for fats, oils, and grease, into those to determine what the impacts are on the digesters. So our first priority with this is to make sure that the water reclamation plant maintains its ability to treat and process wastewater, so we're testing on a small scale to see, to understand what those impacts are and set up operational parameters that we feel comfortable with. So ASU will be performing those services for us on five bench-scale digesters, one of which will serve as a control, two will have food waste introduced to them, and then two will have a combination of food waste and fog. And actually, the city of Mesa has partnered with the city of Tempe on the fog portion of the study. So they operate the Tempe Grease Cooperative, which collects fats, oils, and grease from restaurants in Tempe, and they're looking for a productive end-use for that material, and they see this as a possibility for them to put that material to a productive end-use. So they will be giving us the fog samples, as well as they're currently working through the process to get on their council agenda to get their IGA in place with ASU to participate in the bench-scale testing services. And then Mesa will be responsible for providing the food waste. So we've identified these five organizations here, the United Food Bank, EVIT, will be working with their culinary school, as well as their bistro restaurant, as well as Bash's, Carson Junior High, and ASU to collect food waste once a week, and then we'll provide that food waste sample to ASU to include in the bench-scale testing services. And we'll also be giving them sludge examples, or, excuse me, samples of sludge from the plant. So we'll be using Mesa-specific inputs, and then we'll be getting Mesa-specific data out, so they will give us a final report at the end of the feasibility study with what that output and kind of expected impacts we can anticipate, as well as those operating parameters for, for the Northwest Plant. And then they're also required to give us monthly updates and then attend bi-weekly meetings throughout the feasibility study period. And then the Food to Energy Program has been a collaboration between Environmental Management Sustainability, Water Resources, and Energy Resources, so all of these departments have worked together to develop the feasibility study, as well as reviewing the IGA and giving their feedback, and they will continue to be engaged throughout the feasibility study to provide input and technical expertise. With that, we will answer any questions.
Thank you. I know Mr. Freeman has a question, but Mr. Thompson, go ahead.
I guess I question the whole, this whole project, and not from a standpoint of sustainability, because I think it's a great project, but the need to do a $113,000 study when you can simply do a Google search and there's plenty of white papers and other things that have been written on how successful biodegradable food stuffs are as far as converting to methane. In fact, there's been numerous studies that have done on landfill gas and how they've been, a lot of communities are converting, you know, methane off of the landfills into, you know, they're scrubbing it and converting it to CNG to power CNG vehicles. And so I'm kind of leery of providing $113,000 to ASU to do a study on food products, you know, turning into methane, because we already know that they turn into methane, and so it seems like it's kind of a redundant study when there's already white papers and lots of research out there that's already been done. So I'm trying to figure out what are we really getting for our buck, or for the citizens' buck at the end of the day on this.
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, if I can answer that question. I think one of the things is we've been doing our research, especially over the last six months, we've been working a lot with Water Resources and Energy Resources, and I think all the departments that are in agreement that technically this is a feasible project, because we've been to other places where they're doing this type of work, you know, it's being done across the country, it's technically feasible to do this type of work. What this bench-scale testing will help us with is it'll look at the actual gas production that would be coming from our digesters using food waste that would be collected from Mesa customers, using the sludge from a Mesa plant, and will give us a better idea as we start to run into the financial feasibility of this project, of looking how much of an increase is that gas production? How much is it with food specifically, just food waste, and then with the Tempe partnership? How much does that, because fog increases the biogas production pretty dramatically, so how much of an increase are we going to see from that fog over the food waste? And then we can really look at, because that's going to have a direct effect on the MMBTU that's produced, which is going to affect the financials as far as how much is it going to save us, or how much money can we make off of the renewable identification numbers that are produced if we use them in a vehicle? So this is the portion of it that, yes, while I agree that it is technically feasible to do this, and I think that's one of the alternatives we put in the council report, is that we could kind of move into a pilot phase, but really, everybody that we talk to who is doing this, this was their first step that they did, was they did bench-scale testing to give them specific data related to their specific materials that they're collecting and the plant that they're using, because all the, all the plants are a little bit different from each other.
But human nature being pretty much the same across the U.S., I mean, we're going to dispose of food wastes here, just like they do in any other city in America, maybe not New York or California, but, but pretty much, you know, across the U.S., the, you know, people will dispose of food wastes the same. And so I'm, so I'm wondering, could we just, should we go straight to the pilot and save the upfront cost on that? Because we already know it's plausible, we already know that it can be done, so I'm having trouble gauging exactly what we're buying other than the data to prove that it can be done.
Counsel, Mayor, I don't think we're trying to prove that it can be done. I don't, I think we're trying to find the recipe for Mesa.
Right.
To put it in a simple terms. And the experience has been, we've already, we've visited, and they've spent, the staff spent a lot of time actually on the ground with the companies that are doing this in California and...
Where else?
Florida, we've... Florida. So we've done the research, yes, we believe it can be done. We've got to find the recipe for Mesa, and it's a lot cheaper to scale this on a bench and a laboratory where we can control for the different elements than going and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, many millions of dollars, in our digester and trying to make those adjustments then. So I think we felt like this would be a better proof of concept, that then, when they come back to me and to the council, we can give you a higher level of assurance that we understand the recipe that's necessary to maximize the production of gas that we're looking at. That's how I understand, so we look at it as a...
I guess I'm struggling, Chris, with the, with the, what is the recipe? Because, I mean, if they're already doing it in Florida and other, other cities, other states, they've already pretty much got that recipe dialed in.
But they're telling us to do it this, this is what they're telling us. They're telling us this is how they got to their success, is this is what they, I mean, we're not, we didn't come up with this on our own, they're recommending it. We have a partner with Tempe, because we're going to be bringing in their fats, oils, and...
Grease.
Grease into this mixture too. So while Mesa, I think the assumption might be that, well, everywhere is the same, I think the experience is that's maybe not always the case, because our sludge may come from different sources, different kinds of byproducts that are brought into it. Ultimately, we'd get to the same point, I think we were just concerned doing effective due diligence before we spend, we go deeper into this with significant costs and have to spend money trying to make those adjustments. I mean, I hear what you're saying, I think we understand, we believe it can be done, we want to make sure we do it right, and we understand what, and frankly, for me, it's not only that, but I need to see the feasibility of what it's going to take to take this lower level scale and upscale it to what we need, and making sure when we come to council and say we need to spend, I'm not sure what the number is, hundreds of thousands of dollars or more, that I, we feel confident we've done this at a scale and we understand as well as possible what it's going to take to do it. I don't think it's the building the facilities, I mean, you showed me the infrastructure, it seems pretty common, but I think there's some other elements in the science of this that we need to understand better. And Tempe is, this is where Tempe is too, they're also very much interested in being part, part of this. And that's why we wanted to bring it to council, I mean, this is moving us forward, this was an idea that we've talked about for the last year, but now we're ready to kind of take it, and it's kind of like, you know, like a good, any R&amp;D big company, they want to kind of put it in the laboratory for a while, make sure they understand it for their conditions before they scale it up. So I understand, I appreciate your confidence in this happening, but I think we feel like it's better dollars spent now in this controlled environment than trying to do it on the larger scale. That's, that's our recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
I have both of my questions answered.
Okay.
Good question. What's the timeline, did you mention the timeline as far as the study?
Yes, so the feasibility study will start in October of this year and end September next year.
It's a full year.
Full year.
I do have a couple of questions. So are we, I know we've got some, some great organizations that are participating and probably contributing a fair amount of organic food waste, that are we going to, is the, is that headed towards one of our big digesters to some extent, or is that all going to smaller digesters in an ASU-operated lab, or some combination of the two?
For the, yeah, for the bench-scale testing, that'll all, will, will collect in the 35-gallon bins, you see here, I'll show, this is that kind of little bin right here, or barrel, excuse me, I'm learning my lingo, barrel, right there, that gentleman's standing next to, so they'll have either two to five will be located at each of these facilities, depending on their volume, and the thought is we'll bring that back and then kind of, we call slurry that material, kind of put it into a industrial-sized garbage disposal, and then take samples from there and give it to ASU for use in the bench-scale testing, is how we envision that working.
And what that allows us to do, so as part of, this is just one part of the feasibility study that we're doing, but that collecting the material over this year too, also lets us learn what is the customer dealing with, what challenges do they have, what challenges do we have? We've got outreach material as far as contamination, what can go into that barrel and what's not allowed to go into that barrel. So this will allow us insight also into how is that outreach material working, you know, places that have higher turnover, is it easier to deal with the students, or is it easier to deal with the Bash's? So really, this, that's another portion of it, where we're looking at that food supply and where is it going to come from, how are we going to collect it, and how clean does it need to be, what kind of outreach do we have to have? And that's something that Mesa's going to be taking on as part of that, because that's really what we do with the other barrel programs that we have with, with the blue and the green barrel.
So during the presentation, I thought I heard a reference to the Northwest wastewater treatment plant and the digester there, we're not going to use that, not yet.
Not, not, this is not, no, that's, that's the eventuality down the road.
Okay.
Yes, that is, that is the intent to...
That's the long-term, that's after we prove the concept up. Part of proving the concept up is everything Scott said, but Scott, it's also, we need to make sure that the gas that we're creating the byproduct is something that can be used, right? Because that's something that's always being modified at the experience of others, is that sometimes the gas that is being, the byproduct doesn't necessarily always meet the standards that's necessary.
We will need a treatment system on the backend of this to treat the gas. The biogas that comes out is not what would be considered renewable natural gas at that point, it's carbon dioxide and methane, so we'll be taking the methane out, and then there's other constituents that ASU as part of the bench-scale testing will be measuring, and that's going to help our engineers who are participating in the feasibility study as they're putting together like what the glass, gas cleanup system needs to be, sizing of it, and what constituents it needs to take out.
Okay. Is there, and I see that, that food is probably a high-energy material.
Yes.
But other organic materials like stuff out of the green barrels, maybe some of the waste products from the waste treatment plant, I mean, it seems like there are other organic materials that could be, that produce methane as they decompose as well. Are those not of sufficient energy that it's not worth including them in the study as well? Because I...
Those can't be added to the digesters at the Northwest or any of the digesters that we have for municipal sewage. Okay, those are typically done, and we've been to a couple of these places where they do dry digesters, digesters, sorry, and they're using more of that type of material and maybe mixing it with food waste. In my mind, if we were going to move to that, then that becomes more of a residential, and we'll probably need some sort of partner, because those are the types of projects that we've seen that people are spending 60, 80, 100 million dollars, because you have to build brand-new digesters. Whereas with this project, we have existing digesters with existing capacity in them, and so it's just looking at trying to leverage and utilize that existing infrastructure that the city has already. But something like yard waste wouldn't be able to go in there, because that's not what those digesters are designed to process.
Okay, thank you, understood. Mr. Freeman has a question, then, Mr. Thompson?
Okay, I give, I have a question. At the end of the day, I listened to you earlier this year about a presentation about the tipping fees and the landfill and the costs involved and the recycling costs, and, you know, we're reaching, reaching that margin where it's going to cost us money to give recyclables probably to the landfill, is that correct?
Right.
I mean, eventually.
Yeah, we actually, and actually, you have that today on your agenda even, we have an amendment to a contract for the processing fee for our recycling materials, and we will go from that being a revenue to it now being an expense for recycling. We don't anticipate right now that it'll be more than landfilling, but it will become an expense.
So not to that be a sideline, but going back to Councilmember Thompson's question, I look, I guess I look forward to see how the bench testing turns out, so we can save some money on tipping fees, I don't think we've, or maybe you have evaluated how much money we can save by collecting food waste...
Yep.
...from these businesses, and then you extrapolate that and take that template out into the community and, and take more food waste to digest it to make more gas to put in some, one of our trucks or whatever. So I can see that as working, so I guess the whole thing for me is hopefully we can save money through this project with your environmental costs and everything as we do business within our community. And this project can be built with partnerships with other communities like Tempe or others. If we have the digesters, I don't know if they have the digesters.
They do not.
Okay.
That's why they're interested in partnering with us, because they don't currently have any.
So the digesters at Riverview?
Yes.
Area? You say Northwest, or is that Riverview?
The Northwest Plant is, yes, at the 101 and 202.
Okay, at Riverview, that's where I put it in my brain. So, yeah, I know this is going to cost some money, I'm kind of borderline on, on the whole concept, but I'm looking forward to the evaluation outcome of this, so thank you.
Scott, going back to one of the slides that showed the participating partners, now, is this going to be something that's going to be rolled out, if it's proven that it works, or we have our recipe for Mesa, is this something that's going to be rolled out across the, across the city and will take food stuffs from, from the citizens, or is this only those participating agencies? And if it's only those participating agencies, is there going to be enough methane generated off of those to actually do what we're wanting to do, which is, my guess is, running the CNG vehicles that we have, whether they're the solid waste or otherwise? Because it's pretty, you know, and you said it before, everything that you take off the digester isn't necessarily going to be CNG quality, you know, because you have to scrub it, take the acids out and everything else, and you had to add the stink back to it, the mercaptain back to it, deodorize it, and then you have to compress it and everything else. And so by the time you do all that, is the, is what we're putting in and what we're getting out equitable? Or are we going to be, are we going to have an overabundance, because we're going to have so many people that are willing to commit to providing the city with their food scraps or, or food waste? And what I'm getting at is eventually we could put that, we could basically feed that methane straight back into our pipeline, into our own natural gas system, and sell that at wholesale cost or what have you, as we do now with natural gas. But, you know, so if we have this overabundance, we can certainly put it back into our pipeline. If it's an underabundance, do we have just enough to feed our solid waste vehicles? And so that's what I'm curious as to, you know, what are we looking at as far as integrating the food wastes into the, into the digester? Is it only a few select, or is it citywide?
No, we would be looking at, this is, would be a commercial-only operation, so it wouldn't include residential, so it wouldn't be part of your residential services that you have, is the way that we're looking at it. Our estimates, and again, this is where the feasibility study will, will help us refine these numbers, but as we've worked with the other departments and Environmental Management, we estimate somewhere maybe around 40 tons a day that we could, could be handled at the Northwest Plant. What we chose with these partners that we're using right now is we have a grocery store, we have a restaurant, we have the food bank, we have Mesa Public Schools, which is our largest customer, and it's Mesa Public Schools, their culinary kitchen and their cook kitchens from the junior high. So what we're trying to do is get different sectors represented within these partners over the next year to see what we're looking at and doing waste audits of them, so that as we now try and extrapolate that out to what does a grocery store look like, we're using Bash's information that we've collected from them and our work with them, same with the restaurants, that we're able to look at what are restaurants, what do we expect from them? And then we can also communicate with them what type of outreach we need, and we can communicate as far as what is acceptable, what's not, what are best practices that we have found here. So it would go beyond just these agencies that we'd be working with now, but these agencies were selected specifically to try and get a broad range of what we anticipate would be other customers that we would go after in the future, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so you say 40 tons?
40 tons.
Per?
Day.
Per day? Do you have an idea, or maybe Frank does, how much natural gas, MMBTUs, that would generate?
I did, I have that spreadsheet actually sitting, I was looking at it before we left and it's sitting on my printer, but I don't...
Pretty significant?
Remember, it is a significant amount. It, it matches up, to be honest, from what we've seen, it matches up nicely with the consumption that we have from our vehicles. So with the last vehicles that we've ordered since council's been back in session, once those vehicles come in, we'll be about 90%, just under 90% I believe, of our CNG conversion of the fleet, and we've been looking at when we have 100% of that fleet converted, and that should just be a little bit more, our usage from our projections, and again, the feasibility study will help lay all of this out, should be just a little bit higher than what our production is from the Northwest Plant.
So realistically, we wouldn't even need to do a compressor station to compress it, we could just feed it right back into our pipeline and, and go that direction.
Yeah, there's some capacity issues maybe with Riverview and how that's going to work, and again, that's where, the great part about this, and as when I first took over the, the position as Director of Environmental Management and went out and was talking with folks that are doing these type of things, they were amazed that the city of Mesa owns the solid waste utility, the wastewater utility, and the natural gas utility.
Right.
And that's what everybody said is, well, nobody has that.
That's a pretty big deal.
It's a vertical integration that we have that makes it easier, because now I'm not talking to somebody outside of the organization, it's somebody that I deal with on a daily basis, and we have a common goal of things that we're trying to accomplish, and so that's what we'll be looking as we go through.
Very cool.
Great. This was a surprisingly interesting topic.
I'm sorry, I'll never do this again.
But I do note that we actually have an important presentation on our regular agenda, so thank you very much, we're going to move on to that.
Thank you.
You bet. The next item on our agenda for this meeting, it actually was, yeah, Item 2 is to hear a presentation and discuss an update on efforts in Mesa to reduce homelessness. Natalie and Aaron, thank you for your good work on this topic, looking forward to hearing what you have to tell us.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Natalie Lewis, I work in the city manager's office, and I'm joined here today with Detective Aaron Rain. Aaron has just recently been named the city manager's liaison for helping us reduce homelessness.
Oh, there you announced that thing, okay.
Yeah, I'm not going to do that.
Just recently announced that.
So we now have someone who full-time is really helping us focus on homelessness and pulling all the resources together, and, and that is Aaron. And so I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Aaron in the interest of time, and he can introduce the rest of his team who's here too.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to share what we've been doing so far. I'd like to introduce a couple of core members of our team that have been working on this with me, you have Detective Brandon Lavin, Detective Brandon Cozlos, you guys can stand up, and then Mark Young from United Way. These are the four people that are, that we're really working with on the, from the PD side and from the nonprofit side to make progress. As you know, this is not a Mesa-only issue, this is not just a city issue, so as you've asked in the past, we've been collaborating with nonprofits, all the city departments, trying to opt, city departments, nonprofits, faith-based groups, trying to optimize the existing resources. And we've been, we've been able to capitalize a lot on that. You look at situations, like I had a gentleman that we had to, that was transported to the hospital 26 times last month, and I had fire captains calling me in the middle of the night, hey, I've got this guy, and I had police officers say, I've got this guy, I've got the courts calling me, I have the nonprofits, we're all working together to get this guy through the steps to get him to the places. And it was literally a level of collaboration that the city has not seen with the nonprofits, with the faith-based groups, with multiple city departments, all working towards the same goal. So optimizing our existing resources has been key. Mark Young and I from the United Way have been working closely together to develop and to maximize existing nonprofit and faith-based group relationships. The community court led by Judge Tafoya and Paul Thomas has been a really integral part of what we're doing, that being that for the service-resistant folks, the folks that you walk up to and are, that are homeless and they're looking for help, that's the easy one. that are homeless and they're looking for help, that's the easy one. But the service-resistant folks is where the Community Court comes into play. And that's where they get, they get to court via either a citation from the police or a referral from another court, and they're offered services in lieu of incarceration. And as you can imagine, many people are capitalizing on that. And what we've been finding is that once we get them in services, off the street, housed, they're no longer a problem. They're no longer the recidivism, there's no longer the continued calls for service. The quality of life for them has improved, as well as the police department, the fire department, the citizens of Mesa, everybody involved, their quality of life has improved. So that combined with the new police policy on how we deal with homelessness and the procedures, have turned our judicial system effectively into a conduit to connect people to services. So as we do that, we've been, we've been collaborating with MAG and Community Bridges on our highest system utilizers, find those people that are constantly in the system and constantly being, using the services. And we've been going down our list and getting the by-name each person, getting them contacted, getting them connected to services. We've had a lot of success with that, working with our partners. Mark Young and I have been optimizing efforts with the Mark Center, CBI, House of Refuge, Family Promise and New Leaf, Save the Family. I'm sure I'm probably missing some more. There's a ton of nonprofits that we're all working together now, whereas before it was everybody's like, well, my duty goes to here. We're all kind of looking past where our boundaries are and looking at trying to meet the people's needs. An additional step is we're working regionally with the East Valley City Managers. We've been meeting with them regularly, and one of the things that we're looking to do with the East Valley City Managers is develop a master housing plan, if you will, trying to develop the appropriate composite of market value housing, permanent supportive housing, bridge housing, and shelter, based on the data from HMIS, using that to kind of extrapolate what the appropriate ratio would be so that we can effectively meet the needs down the road. That's been an extremely important thing, because what we're trying to do is get to a functional zero. And I'm sure you guys know what that is, is we're never going to completely end homelessness, but we can certainly do a better job at providing services and provide a more robust system on getting people connected to services. And that's what we're looking to achieve here. And with that, there is no one-size-fits-all for, if there was, I'm sure the city would have paid for it a while ago and we would have this problem solved, but there is not. So what we've been able to do is, like, our system is more person-centric as opposed to behavior-centric. So it's based on the person's needs and what they need as opposed to what the box that they're supposed to fit in in society. So when they get to Community Court or they get connected to services, it's based, we meet them at the level that they're at in their life and where they are at that location. And Operation Main Line from the Police Department's been a perfect example of this, where we, as police officers, partner shoulder to shoulder with community members from Community Bridges, from other nonprofits, go out and contact homeless people, offer them services, and get them connected to services. So far, I believe the stat's on the next slide, but I think we've contacted, doing that, 154 people with that, 72 accepted services, and of that, 16 are currently housed. And that was simply by going out and police officers asking, would you like some help? We can get you some help. So that's been very, very, very successful. Current strategies that are underway, as you know, we have navigators downtown at Pos de Cristo and at the court. The Community Court navigators are very busy getting people connected to services. Community Court has been an awesome cross-departmental disciplined collaboration. It's literally everybody coming together and working on this. Like I said, I had fire captains calling me and working with me on the same people that we're trying to get with Community Court, and the judge is calling me. We're all working together. The library with the updated code of conduct, the library's been super successful, the library staff there are fantastic and done an amazing job of rolling that out. With Pos de Cristo, we have navigators there, and St. Vincent de Paul, a resource center at Pos de Cristo. What we're looking for is a consistent, well-known referral system, no wrong door. Getting people connected regardless of where it is. Stop looking where your boundaries are and let's find a need to get them, to get them met. We were working with a veteran a while back, and there was a bunch of confusion on getting, the VA wasn't doing this, this county wasn't doing that, and getting everybody kind of collaborating was the key, because all we were trying to do was the same thing, but nobody wanted to go the full extra measure. So just a matter of getting everybody on the same page and realigning the goals, we were able to get the guy housed. We've done a lot with the encampments. We've changed our concept and our approach to outreach and education, and then Operation Main Line has been super successful. Looking for East Valley Care Center, like a partnership with Tempe, Encircle the City to provide some medical care. Emergency bridge housing, Mark Young from the United Way's been working hard on this, and we'll be progressing some of that in the near future here. Increasing housing options citywide and regionally, as I talked about, that master plan of housing, expanding regional access points for real-time data, so we're able to ascertain the real numbers in Mesa. And then that's been kind of new for us. HMIS data is pretty new for us, us having access to it, so we're able to now extrapolate from that what we're looking to do. And then continued full-time support staff, which is me, and then my team, and everybody else. And with that, are there any questions?
Thank you.
I tried to get it quick because I know we're short on time.
Nicely done. Council, questions for these folks?
I'd just say, Aaron, I think you guys are doing a tremendous job on, you know, moving the envelope, I guess, per se on this, and working with Mark. You know, we're encountering a lot of the same issues, Councilmember Luna and I, in our districts, that you're experiencing in the downtown area. And so to be able to get those navigators out into our districts is kind of a big deal because we hear it from our constituents as well. The only, and I don't want this to come across as callous because it's, I do have passion and compassion for our homeless individuals, but, you know, one of the issues that I do have is that every year we continue to put more and more and more and more funds towards places like Pos de Cristo because they want to feed more and more and more and more people. And so we're seeing more and more and more people coming in from outside of Mesa to eat at Pos de Cristo and some of the other organizations, which isn't a bad thing, except we're inheriting other cities' issues instead of taking care of our Mesa homeless. And I'm trying, I struggle with, at what point do we turn people away and push them back to Tempe or Glendale or to Phoenix or wherever and say, hey, we need help. We can't take everybody on in Mesa, because it's, at the end of the day, it's going to cost us a lot of money, either on the nonprofit side, or it's going to cost us a lot on the other side, where you have the frequent flyer that PD and fire and everyone else is dealing with 26 times and incarcerating, and then, you know, just to pick him up again, he or she up again, to reincarcerate again, because, you know, they have issues that can't be resolved or don't want to be resolved. And so, you know, I struggle sometimes with that, and it's not, like I said, I hope I don't come across as being callous, but we do have an issue here. And until we can understand what we're doing and truly wrap our minds and our arms around it, I don't see how we're going to reduce the homelessness population.
Is there something you want to say, Aaron?
Yeah, as Mayor, Councilmember, that's a good question. I think also with POS, you've got to remember, we've been adding a lot of services there too with the navigators, and so we're going to get, we're funneling more people intentionally to POS because we have the additional navigators and working on getting their IDs. That's the place to get IDs for the East Valley here for the homeless. So we are intentionally funneling a lot more people there for that purpose, not always just for the food, but there are a lot of people that were doing those additional services. So I think that's part of some of the increase. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Hey, Jeremy, are you on the phone?
Yes, sir.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Aaron, I know you and I have talked about this in the past, and I'm super proud of the fact that you guys are proactively addressing the homelessness issue, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Luna.
First of all, thank you for dealing with this problem. I mean, it's just proliferated. We have issues in East Mesa, as my colleague mentioned, and I appreciate you working with co-compliance. A lot of them live in the shrubbery that's in the desert area. But you also mentioned MAG. Tell me how you're working regionally with the entire Maricopa County in terms of trying to ameliorate the situation. It's affecting not only Mesa, but it's affecting the whole region.
Yes, Vice Mayor. So I'm part of the East, or the Maricopa Association of Governments Outreach Collaborative. We meet monthly, and we go over all the issues that outreach people are dealing with. With that, myself, the city of Mesa, and Community Bridges were tasked by MAG to go through our by-name list and get those high-system utilizers as a project for everybody else to kind of study once we're done. And so we've been able to go down that list and get those high-system utilizers. So with that, with the Outreach Collaborative that we're a part of, we share policies regionally, we share basically everything. It's not just police departments, it's not just cities, it's the outreach professionals, it's everybody that has touch with homelessness that does the outreach, all working together, trying to find better ways to get needs met. So that's how personally I'm working with MAG on that.
Thank you. Council, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Aaron, for doing this. We've had a lot of conversations about this. There's some faith-based groups that want to come into our community and then provide social services for the homelessness in certain quarters of our community. And it feels like going to Councilmember Thompson's position is, you know, we're already stretched thin. Some of the organizations, like POS, provides court as well as showers and shave and ID and food, so it's kind of comprehensive. But what are we going to do with other faith-based organizations wanting to come up and buy a building and set up and probably deliver more services to our homelessness in our community? Has there even been thoughts about that? Mr. Young has any thoughts on that as well? But it kind of probably overburdens our district. Every one of our districts is affected by homelessness, so some more than others.
So Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we have had a couple of examples most recently where that is happening, and I know that we're working with the neighborhoods in that particular area, because these are legitimate, sometimes businesses, faith-based businesses that are coming in to try to do the right thing. But some of the concerns that we've had is what's also happening in and around the area, so we're wanting to make that strong. So we're working on that as well. But, you know, as far as keeping them from coming to Mesa if they're legitimate and they're in, you know, zoning areas, they're allowed to be there. The best thing that we can do is just make sure they're part of our system, because what we're just trying to do, like Aaron said, is make sure there is no wrong door and that the people that are here in Mesa and providing these services are all, they all understand how the system works and how we're working with everyone so that we're not duplicating services and we're not kind of stepping over each other. So we work really hard on not duplicating and not doing those things.
Well, thank you. I mean, I think it's important to share that communication with those faith-based businesses wanting to come into our community, because if those services are already being provided elsewhere, why do we need others? But then again, there's probably no wrong door, like you say. However, there is a, there is a lot of them here in our community, and I appreciate their efforts, first of all.
Yeah, and one of the areas that we really need help in is in emergency bridge housing, and the faith-based community is coming forward, and we're having a lot of conversations about helping that. So when you find someone who's homeless and needs a little bit of time to get on their feet, or until we find a permanent solution for them, we need that bridge housing, and the faith-based community could be a part of that solution. So that's still a gap in our system that we're working on.
And, but those are success stories, that then we have our hardcore homeless people who never want any help and who are there in our community. So that's going to be a lifelong struggle for all the services we deliver.
Right.
Thank you.
Quick question.
Yes.
Was there a strategy around workforce? I know a couple months ago, there was a workforce strategy. Is that being analyzed or thought of as well?
Workforce strategy?
Like employing, I know Tempe has this pilot program going as well. The Albuquerque was an example as well, as far as?
Yeah, we actually did look into the Albuquerque idea and honestly found that it failed. And so we've moved away from that concept, but we do work very closely with the Mark Center, another one of our partners, and they do job readiness, training and skills training for individuals experiencing homelessness.
Let me just say thank you. I mean, I think it was over a year ago that the council said we'd like Mesa United Way and then the agencies and the city government to come together to work on a strategic plan to address homelessness, because I think it became obvious to all of us that the resources that we have to bring to this problem are this big and the problem is this big. So how do we prioritize our resources to the most vulnerable population? And so I couldn't be more pleased with the work that has been done that has brought us to this point. Thank you. There's, I'm very, very proud of Mesa's response here. And to that end, I know the comment was made about POS. I think last year, I think we kind of had to, at the last minute, work some magic just to make sure that POS got the same funding that it had the previous year. And so I don't think that, at least to this point, I haven't noticed that we're committing additional resources. I think what we're doing is trying to get a bigger bang for our buck, and the Community Court model that you've talked about, I think, is the best example of that, where we're trying, it's not business as usual. We're trying to get people off of this treadmill where, you know, catch and release, catch and release. And so to me, that, if you look at it from a fiscal responsibility model, I think that's going to pay dividends that will financially be very defensible. So kudos to you, but also to Judge Tofoya and the great work that's being done at the Community Court. And again, I just love this idea that we have not, there's no wrong door between the community services and the police department and the jail and everybody involved in there. We're not turning people away anymore and saying, that's not my job, good luck finding services. To me, that might be the best takeaway from what's gone on here. There's been an attitudinal change on the part of the beat officers and the court and the human service providers. I get the feeling, everybody feels like they're a part of a team now. So I'm not saying that we've solved this problem by any means, but thank you for the great work that you've done. It'll be fun to see this develop and to see the additional progress as we work on this. Mr. Thompson?
Just one idea. Have we engaged with MCC and ASU to see, to Councilmember Horetia's point, have we spoke with any of our, any of our educational communities and even perhaps EBIT to see if we can carve out some workforce development programs and work with our, with our business community to see if there's capacity at some of the, some of those, like Boeing or some of the other employment centers or employers throughout the city where we could take someone and get them, you know, maybe they have majority of the skills, but not all the skills, that we can get them trained and into, into a position where they're sustainable? Have we started talking or having those discussions?
Mayor, Councilman Thompson, you read my mind. It's actually on my agenda of things to do. EBIT was going to be my first stop, trying to get a trade school, if you will, get them a welding certification or something, teach them to fish so that they can earn and they can have a sustainable job. And so that's actually on my list of things that I'm looking to do, but that's a really good point.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
You might want to try with Mesa Public Schools, they have an adult education program. A lot of them just don't, you know, haven't completed their GED. So starting with them, ascertaining what their needs are, and then directing them into, you know, a CTE program, something similar to that, where they learn a skill. But start working Mesa Public Schools, adult education.
Mesa Council College.
Mesa Council College is another option.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I think we all are anxiously awaiting the invitation to sit in at Community Court. I've been bugging Judge Tofoya about it, and he keeps saying, we're not quite ready for you to come and visit yet.
We get better each time.
Yeah. Counsel, I think we are all going to be really, really impressed when the time is right for us to go and sit in on Community Court and see, a lot of the resources that we're talking about are already in the room and being talked about. And instead of saying, report to jail, they're saying, report to this agency for these types of services. So that's going to be fun to see it in action. All right, we are a little bit out of time, but thank you very much for all you've done. Really appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is item three, acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is agenda item three, hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Mr. Thompson?
Real quickly, two things. Last week I got to attend a conference in Atlanta with Scott Butler, and we were, I got to present on our Mesa Fire and Police Department and the pilot project that we're running on the ambulatory services. And so a lot of other communities had, are having some of the same issues that we've had and are struggling with it. So it was, I think it was very well-received by some of the other communities. And then the second thing I'd like to bring up is that tomorrow is Councilmember Whitaker's birthday, I just found out. So happy birthday to Jeremy Whitaker. So happy birthday to Jeremy Whitaker.
Thank you.
Amen. Hopefully you're someplace enjoying it. Happy birthday, Mr. Whitaker. Mr. Luna?
No comment.
Okay.
Last week, I attended a meeting with Hispanic elected local officials, and it was a great meeting. We talked about broadband, housing, the opioid epidemic, state of the nation in terms of legislative action. And of course, Congress is acting quickly and approving the budget before the September 30th deadline, so they're actually working to get, get that through. So there's a lot of bipartisan support to get it done, so. Great meeting, and glad to represent City of Mesa.
Great, thank you for doing that. Other comments, Council? If not, Mr. Brady, can you help us with the schedule?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that the study session for this Thursday, September 20th, has been canceled, and the next study session will be Thursday, September 27th at 7:30 a.m. We do want to remind Councilmembers that, and the community, actually, that Councilman Heredia will be having mobile office hours on Thursday, September 27th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the Dobson Ranch Library, and that's located at 2425 South Dobson Road as well. Councilmember Chris Glover will be having his mobile office hours on September 27th from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., but his will be at the Visit Mesa offices, which are located at 120 North Center Street. So encourage everyone from those districts to get out and meet their councilmember. And maybe for Councilman Glover, maybe your last time to tell him what a great job he's been doing, so.
Great. Thank you, Council. There's nothing else? Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Hey, John?
Yes, Jeremy? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was having technical difficulties, and I had a question, item 4K. Should I address that now or wait for the actual meeting?
Let's do it now, so we, we know if it's off the consent agenda or not.
Perfect. So I know, I believe that was the increase on the recycling cost on our end, and I was curious, with this latest increase, is recycling now a burden on our budget, or are we still making slim margins on the recycling side of things?
Thank you, Jeremy. I had the same question as well. Please.
Mayor, Councilmember, it is going to go from a revenue to now a cost associated with the recycling. It'll still be less expensive, we are projecting, than what it costs to landfill the material, but there is going to be a cost associated with recycling, at least for the near future, depending on what commodity markets do.
I got it. So we're sort of in the middle now. We're still saving on costs as to bring it to the landfill, but we're no longer making money on the recycling, if I understand you correctly?
That would be correct.
Okay, and how is the cost being dispersed to our utility rate payers? Is it kind of just spread across the board? Is there a dollar number associated to every user? How, how are you spreading out that cost at this point?
We, as part of our budget presentation, when we were here in the budget cycle, we had switched some of those funds as part of our rate structure to show it as an expense. And so right now, it's, it's embedded in the rate for our solid waste customers. Again, depending on what happens with the commodity markets and what we see as we move forward with recycling, that, that may change for the positive, or it may be worse, depending on, on what happens with the commodity markets. But right now, the rate is, yeah, right now for the residential rate is not changing, and we don't anticipate it changing for the year.
So the actual recycling cost, though, it's just being spread out for every person? It's not like the people at Recycle pay any additional, just that cost is spread?
No, no.